I can grab it from the agenda.
Did you grab your agenda? Did you grab all of them?
No, I just grabbed one.
Are they on their printer?
Yeah.
Yeah, they might be.
This one right here?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, July 23rd, and just as a note, we do have a quorum today. Selectmen Alonzo and Selectmen Emke are both joining us via Zoom, and Selectmen Moore is not able to join us tonight. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin tonight with public comments. Are there any public comments from the Board? Selectmen Alonzo. I also just wanted to make sure that they can hear us, so. Selectmen Emke, can you hear us?
Public access isn't on Zoom, that's just.
All right, it looks like we're having some technical difficulties with Zoom, so I will just open it up to public comments from the public. Mr. McDonald.
Good evening. Dave McDonald, 155 Island Road, Lunenburg. I'm here tonight for a lot of different reasons. But one, I'm here, and I only come out to the people that I respect. And Heather, I do respect you. I'm very sorry that you're leaving. I'm sorry you leave under these circumstances. I know for seven and a half years, we worked together pretty well. We've done a lot of work together in town. We've done a lot of work during COVID. We've done a lot of work together with fundraising, with the fire department. And you are going to be missed. Now, if you're leaving on your own, that's fine. But I think you've been kind of flimflam a little bit. The last two and a half years have been very hard. Hard on you, and hard on the town, and hard on us. But there was a lot of manipulation going on as well. I hope you know that, and I think you do know that. And I hope the manipulation stops with a new Chair, Caesar. I hope you vote from your heart and vote for the people, not for yourself. And that's what's been happening in this town. Echo? Is that fixed? So, I just wanted to say thank you for what you've done for the town. I would also hope you would reconsider. I mean, knowing what you know now, I think you could really recover. And I really hope you consider that. There's no reason for you to be leaving the town of Lunenburg right now. That's my feeling. But I know politically, you're kind of assassinated along the way. Don't want to use that word. But yeah, it's hard to get out of a hole. Once rumors start spreading about you, it can't stop. And the Board knows what I'm talking about. So I apologize for that. We're better than this. It shouldn't come to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Are there any other public comments coming up? And then if you could just say your name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Thank you.
Jason Rowe, 100th and Zet Lane, Lunenburg, Mass. This is not my thing, but this is important to me. And I don't know where I'm supposed to go with this. I have two different issues I can't come to resolve with. I live on the lake. One of them, if we don't have time, I don't know. If you could tell me where to go, or we could have another time at another meeting. That's how I was told sometimes this works. First of all, we keep having a lot of very large events happening, unsupervised. Not against Shady Point. I'm not against what they do. I get along with a lot of people that go there. I like having them around. Recently, we've had big events, surprise. I look out, 60 fishing boats in my backyard. Not against them fishing. They throw lures at my boat. They've damaged a ton of property this year. They've caused complete chaos. I am under the understanding that they're leasing their ramp to this private organization. I have contacted Chris. I have asked him to please give me a heads up if they're going to have a huge event. Nope, can't do it. It's private. I said, "Sarah, this is what I would really like, so I'm not asking much." He said, "Nope, can't help you." They told me to call whenever they have a problem. I have three or four calls that were unanswered. So I don't know where to go with that. I have a lot of other people that call me and ask for the same help, too. They won't come here. They are afraid to. They're afraid to say something to people that are hurting their property. One kid said, "Oh, yeah, they cut up my boat cover." "Did you call the police?" "Well, no, I didn't think I could." "Of course you can." Another topic. We also have a resident allowing an 11-year-old to ride a jet ski. One of my friends said something to him. We had a huge altercation. We were not out of line. They were. I called Lunenburg Police. They did nothing. They came to my house, took my report, never heard from again. Went to the station three times. It took them 13 days to get me my police report. And it said, "We couldn't find the house." I don't know what I'm supposed to do. I called Environmental, too. Environmental has been on the lake. They've been doing a fantastic job when they're there. I've seen them turning people around, correcting what they're doing wrong, et cetera. I don't know. If you need more people to email, write, talk to give their side, I can put together a lot of people. They've all asked me to help them. Just trying to make things better for everybody. Any thoughts on what I can do with this?
So the first step, if you don't mind, can you send me an email so that I have contact information for you? And just so I can actually have it?
Absolutely. And I've been trying to come for about a month, but I got really provoked this weekend. We had quite a few incidences. We had one guy fall off his jet ski and the thing went right across the lake with his tether not on. We actually had to go get the jet ski. There was another incident where another boat had 13 people. And on the boat, they left six of them floating and went out two of them. We were like, "You can't do that. There's 60 jet skis around. Somebody's going to get hit." You know, we are going to be on the news very soon. So I would be happy to get you my email. And I work 60, 70 hours a week, so.
Yeah.
For me to come here is a lot. I'm losing a day off, you know, a night off. But I will get that to you, and then we can be in contact. And maybe you guys can help me know what to do, just to make things better.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm sorry to hear you're going through all that.
No, no problem. We'll take care of it.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Mr. Burden?
George Burden, 39.
Say it again when you get up to the microphone.
George Burden, 39, Cortland Circle. I just wanted to address Mr. Jeffries' comment about defamation. Defamation, trying to find out information of an attorney that he told me he used. I do not call that defamation. What it seems to occur here is that maybe he's a little uncomfortable of the situation that's occurred, of tying the situation that I'm going through with a bunch of trustees that we feel are tied to the town, have done, you know, some very unprofessional, poor things to my family and I that we feel the town is involved in, and Mr. Jeffries directly involved, we feel, making comments about a connection that we're trying to find. It's not defamation. If that's defamation, Mr. Jeffries, we feel that you must have some guilt of why that connection might be made. We do feel there is a connection there, but if being a connection made between two people is not defamation at all. And on top of it, defamation is when you lie. It's saying something about somebody when it's not true. Everything I've said is true. I will not lie. My wife will not lie. We'll put our hands on our mother's graves and our Bible to tell you what a lawyer said to us, that you at his firm represented Jeffries Property Management. He spelled Jeffries, I-E-S. So we kind of feel that that might be a little hidden thing there, that if we asked him directly, and maybe it's not that attorney. You know, you addressed it that you spoke to that attorney. What's the firm that your company uses? That's what the question is, and that's what we were told. And you don't want to comment about that. And that's typical of what this town has done to my family and I as we send emails to the Board, to the police, to the town manager. We do not get answers, like we've heard from other residents, right? We don't hear answers. However, they come and attack us. When we get attacked like that and things change 180 degrees, we feel there's a problem. Mr. Jeffries, we spoke to you back in 22. You know, you indicated I have emails and so forth. You indicated we send you 500 emails. Untrue. And if they are emails sent multiple times, it's to follow up with the town manager when we don't get a response on things. It's to follow up on certain things. It's to follow up on, you know, when we don't get a response in videotapes from the town library, when the town, when the town is, the state is actually telling the town to give us those videotapes. Yes, the town got away from that by, you know, pulling a certain card and so forth of saying that there's children in the library. Why do we have videotapes of children, you know, if we can't even get videotapes in a library? Seems very odd to me. You know, we were understood by the librarian that videotape is given to others. All is we wanted the videotape is to prove that someone is harassing us. However, that individual seems to be, you know, protected by the town, which we don't know why, the direct connection there. However, we are tracing it back, and we've gotten some very interesting connections made. And, you know, we sent you an email, too, Mr. Newslow. We haven't heard a response. We'd like to know how Mr. Jeffries wanted a response to my comments the last time I was here without, I didn't see him speak to you. It seems like there might be some texting going on behind the scenes. We don't know. That was the question we asked you. We don't hear things. When you don't hear things, or you hear something opposite of what you heard before, it raises concerns. And that's where we're at. We're raised concerns. The town manager, we've sent many emails to her. She won't respond to us at all. Was told to give it back to the Board. The Board won't even respond. We've asked for, you know, executive meetings, for executive meeting minutes. Haven't got them. It's, we don't understand. But there's a lot of stuff going on for us in this town. Unfortunate, and we're going to dig into it. We're going to get to the bottom of it. And we know what was going on. We know what people wanted to do to us. They wanted us out of this town to not raise issues. It was very clear-cut that the police chief being involved with a trustee, an association, discussions with old attorneys that we had now switched to a new attorney and fully attacked my family. We're not being told by the association why they switched attorneys. We understand why potentially, and that's where Mr. Jeffries is kind of getting, you know, asked the question of why his attorney and his firm was being used. It very much looks like, I don't know what to even call it. Group, we're called group-coordinated harassment. That's what this has become, and it's unfortunate that this has happened to my family and I. We looked at everything to stay in this town of Lunenburg, to raise our children, to have our children come back to our home. We're looking to move at some point as one of my kids graduated. It's unfortunate, you know. We wanted them to come back to our home from college and so forth. Won't happen. And, you know, we could have done a lot for this town. Unfortunately, it didn't happen. You know, I was here 10 years. We volunteered at other towns. I volunteer at other towns at this point. I will not volunteer in Lunenburg based on what happened here. It's really unfortunate, and I don't know if you know all the history. I'm sure you've seen some of the emails, but we appreciate some comments. You know, other residents are asking you for help. I've asked for help for two years. Two years. I went to the town manager. She completely ignored us. Then I went to Mr. Jeffries. And he kind of at one point said, "You're a good guy, George. I got emails that state that. However, you turned 180 degrees on us." 180 degrees, which told us there was a problem. And an email completely states where he turned 180 degrees to me. He told us to go to the Chief of Police. I did what he asked, and then I got this email back from Mr. Jeffries saying I was batshit crazy. Okay? Defamation on its own, pretty much right there, Mr. Jeffries. Defamation, again, on January 9th. You want to talk about defamation of what you did to me and my family? That's what we're talking about. And I will defend that in any way I can, and that's why we're here still fighting this. It's going to go on for two years until people kind of come to admit what we wanted, what we came about. But we want to keep it going. We can keep it going. We're going to get to the bottom of it. We're not going to be sitting here getting abused by a town and some friends of people in town. Mr. Jeffries told us in 2022 that there was a problem in town with friendships. And he said that was being investigated. We've heard nothing about that. That was our main concern of one of the things we went to the town manager and Mr. Jeffries about, and then we got attacked even worse, okay? Small town, we understand it. We have senators in this town. We have, you know, others that are very powerful individuals that we understand have connections to the other people in the town as well. Very small town. What happened here should have never occurred, and it should have been handled much more professionally than it did. And I'm going to keep raising these issues to this town until this gets, the problem gets to stop and someone addresses the problem with me. I don't know why we couldn't sit down two years ago. Two years ago. I'll be sitting down with the new town manager as soon as they come aboard, and I will sit down with them and talk to them. And I hope that goes a lot better than two years ago we had when me and my wife went on December 31st of 2022 to the town manager to talk about the issues that we were seeing with the Chief of Police, that we were seeing the issues there with the Chief of Police that the town manager has oversight to. Did nothing. Flipped it back to the police department, and our problems became a lot worse, like I've said. I'll leave it at that. Mr. Jeffries, I know, you know, has comments. It's just very interesting how he had a comment when we didn't see each other, speak to each, you know, to each other. And you mentioned that I go back and forth. It's back and forth because I don't get answers to things, right? And I'm going to keep drilling into it, as I said, until I do get the appropriate answers that we feel we need. It's a disgusting story. It's happened in Lunenburg. We've understood before. And we want it to stop and never seen again. You look back in 2014, when we had a biracial family, right? Look at that situation. Pretty disgusting on its own, what happened there. You know, we feel there was a very similar situation, which we discussed when it's just Jeffrey. You get pushed people out of town. That execution happened to my family and I. It definitely did. And we have some proof. We have some documentation of lies that you've let residents lie to the police. We brought that up to the town manager, and they allowed, it allowed to be continued. It allowed.
Can you?
Yep.
Thank you.
Three minutes is over.
Enjoy the rest of your night, Mr. Burden.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Mrs. Lockwood?
The previous speakers were a lot tougher. Good evening. Anna Lockwood, 91 Main Street. And I'm here to say a bunch of thank yous. First, I want to, well, let me start with this. I recently resigned from the Parks Commission, and now I'm serving in the Council on Aging. So I'm still part of the town. But reflecting back on my few years at Parks Commission, I first want to acknowledge my colleagues at the Parks Commission. We have done a lot of work in the past few years moving the Marshall Park project forward. And it's been a lot of work, a lot of dedicated hours. In particular, I want to give a shout out to my friend Karen Menard. The amount of hours that she has put towards the work, towards Marshall, before I even came into the Board, it's just unmatched. She did a lot of work to help us with the grants, and she's still a phone call away from just about every resident in town. And of course, all the other colleagues. Then I also want to thank the Select Board. When you guys awarded us that $1 million for ARPA money for Marshall Project, you had, it's difficult to tell you how important that money was. That money, along with the vote that we had at a town meeting for the $184,000, is what was, gave us the ability to show the state and the federal government that the town and the Select Board is behind this project. So that seed money has in turn, so, you know, we allocated the $1 million. We were able to turn that into another million and a half. So, you know, thank you to the Select Board for awarding us that money. I think it's a good return on investment. I also want to give a shout out to Lou Franco and Heather Soroka, who participated in that vote, and of course, Tom Alonzo, who is not here today. You weren't there yet, but, you know, you'll have a chance to do another vote, and so will Ms. Emke. And my last thank you is for Heather. You know, when you have a town like Lunenburg run by passionate volunteers, it is essential to have town managers who are equally dedicated to public service and committed to maintaining the highest level of professionalism. Over the years, I have had the privilege of working with you, witnessed this professionalism even in the most challenging times. Your skills have not only complemented the efforts of volunteers, but have made significant impact in our community. Your extensive knowledge of town government and your steadfast manner in guiding the town and its citizens have been key to our success during the easy and the difficult times. This dedication and professionalism are deeply personal to you, and it has shown in everything you do. Your commitment to Lunenburg has been truly inspirational and will be greatly missed. I appreciate all your years of service, and I hope you come and celebrate Marshall Park with us when it's ready.
Gladly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments from anyone on Zoom?
Emmen. Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Dave Rogers. 82 Highland Street. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I'm calling with specific regard to the former Miller Funeral Home on Massachusetts Avenue. If you've gone by recently, you've seen that it's very unkept, and it looks like a hayfield. So, long story short, I took it upon myself to get in touch with the listing broker and talked briefly about how upset I was that the property was not maintained. And she said that she would get in touch with the folks that are interested in the property. It's not sold as yet, I understand. And I just wanted you on the Board of Selectmen to understand that because I hope that you would join in supporting the fact that this area needs to be cleaned up. And I would encourage anybody that feels similarly to contact Agency in Pepperell. It's the Blood Real Estate Agency. And explain your concern, and hopefully we can get this area cleaned up because it is awful. And I thank you for the opportunity to bring this to your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Is there anyone else on Zoom that wants to make a public comment? All right, and I'll also give Selectmen Alonzo or Emke another chance since we had some IT difficulties earlier. Do you guys have anything you want to say?
Nothing for me.
No.
All right, cool. All right, moving on to announcements. I do have two. The Second Annual Town Official Meet and Greet will be held September 26th from 5:30 to 8:30 PM at Low Places Ranch. All staff, committee, and Board members are encouraged to attend to meet and network with members of our local business community. And the town beach is open again as of last Thursday. Are there any other announcements?
Can you just say that date again, Mr. Chair?
Sure. September 26th, 5:30 to 8:30 PM. Do you have any other announcements?
No.
Okay. Communications from other Boards? I don't have any, but I believe Selectmen Alonzo does have one from the Town Manager Screening Committee?
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair. From the Committee, I was unable to attend their meeting because we were in interviews for the interim Town Manager last Wednesday, but I caught up with the Chair, our moderator, Mr. Murphy, who wanted me to read the following. The Screening Committee is committed to act as wider and to enact the widest search as is reasonable to select the next Town Manager. A limiting factor is that an ideal candidate will have Massachusetts municipal experience, not just any financial experience. Hence, MMA is the only targeted place to advertise. At an MMA conference with Select Boards available on video, all presented strongly encourage retaining a recruitment firm. We've been given the firm as a recommendation, Community Paradigm Associates, as the most widely known and respected firm. The current Town Manager concurred with that. They have half a dozen senior associates plus additional support staff, proof that they've been successful enough to build a large firm. They would, if hired, would prepare our town profile to present to job seekers, actually recruit beyond just advertise, vet, and do background checks of candidates. They'll assist in all phases of the process, right up to the hiring. They opine you'll be negotiated with your preferred candidate in 14 to 16 weeks. Compensation for their services is projected between $12,000 and $14,000 plus estimated $700 in advertising. If needed, Heather can fill us in on the procurement and availability of funds. So we are seeking, as a Screening Committee, the authorization and funding for $15,000 to engage with such a recruitment firm. And we feel it's not a lot of money considering the importance of getting the best candidate for the position.
All right, thank you. And can you have the Chair of the Committee email that to the Board just so we can include it in all of our?
I will forward that from the, I will forward this email. It wasn't email. I'll just forward it to the Board right now now that I've read it.
All right, thank you. Any other communications from Boards?
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question of Mr. Alonzo?
Sure.
Mr. Alonzo, given the timeline, are you, is the Committee looking for us to make a more immediate determination if ARPA funds are available on this?
Yes, we are. The sooner the better because obviously we are going ahead with advertisement. That will, we have a meeting, I believe, next week. I don't have the exact date right in front of me. But we want to get forward with the finalized advertisement to get started with that. But we'd also like to engage the recruitment firm if possible because it will cast the widest net, and they come highly recommended.
Okay, so we can discuss it later during ARPA?
Thank you, Mr. Alonzo.
Yep. Are there any other communications from other Boards that anyone has?
Oh, yeah, the volume's a little.
Yeah, to the booth, the volume is a little too high now. So we're getting some feedback in the room?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so moving on. On to appointments. We have a 7:15 PM continuation of public hearing on notice of intent to convert and sell from Chapter 61B, Lot 1 and 3 of Kilburn Street. So I'll invite the Attorney up. So since we last met, we heard from the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. They are not interested in pursuing the property. While conservation does have a set of criteria as it relates to open space, the Open Space Committee itself has not actually met yet. So that's where we're at on this now.
So, good evening, Board Members. Attorney Tom Gibbons for Tim Rick Realty Trust. So yes, I attended the Conservation Commission meeting and the Planning Board meeting. And both have indicated that they were going to suggest that the town not exercise their right of first refusal. And which Committee?
The Open Space Committee.
And so are you planning on not making a decision tonight?
I'll have the conversation with the Board and see.
Sure.
I know that we did send an invitation out if anyone wanted to come from the Open Space Committee. Is anyone from the Open Space Committee here tonight? No? All right, it doesn't look like that. All right, so, like I said, I'm just going to have to open it up to the Board and see where we're at. The Conservation Commission does have a set of criteria that specifically relates to open space. So they use that, too. So it's not like these weren't taken into consideration. So where are we at on this? I'll just open it up. Selectmen Alonzo?
Shall I have a seat or do you want me to stay at the podium?
If anyone has any questions, you can just stay up there for right now.
Sure, no problem at all.
I mean, again, as per our usual procedure, we do hear from open space. Given the fact that two of the Commissions that we rely on, or two of the entities that we rely on, the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, have voted not to exercise that right, weighing, I don't, you know, personally, I'd like to hear from the Open Space Committee. And, but I'm weighing that against what their possible determination would be. Usually when we get parcels that people want us to exercise a right to, it's more than one entity wants us to do it, not just one. So I'm kind of on the fence right now about whether we should vote on it tonight or not. I'd like to hear what other people have to say.
Sure, all right, thank you. And just to the booth real quick, I think we have to meet somewhere in the middle with the volume, with where we're at right now and where we just were, because now it's a little too low. Sorry about that. Selectmen Emke?
So, first question, do we know when the Open Space Committee could consider this matter?
I do not know what their schedule is like off the top of my head. Do you, Heather?
I do not have that.
So, no, but we can come back to that, though. Selectmen Jeffries?
I think I'm in the same position as the majority of the board on this one, which is... How much... I mean, my understanding is that there's still a couple more months left in this timeline, right? And I mean, I... Say again?
August 14th is the next Open Space Committee meeting.
August 14th. So, I mean, I understand how frustrating it can be for the owner that's looking to, you know, move forward. I think the critical piece of this was the lot going to the child to build a house, which we went ahead and approved already. And so... And that, you know, we don't want to interfere with people's ability to, you know, live in town and things of that nature. But I mean, I think that... I think there's a process here that just takes a little bit of time. And I know it's unfortunate for the homeowner who's looking for a determination within 45 days or 60 days, you know. But with it being the summer, with there being multiple boards, you know, it just takes a little bit of time. I mean, I think that what you're... How I read the board's response is that, you know, if Open Space comes... None of us have said that we have any interest in this property. And so we're just... This is, to me, a form... I wouldn't say a formality, but we're making sure that we're going through the right process and making sure everyone has their input. But it seems to be going the direction so far that the town's going to waive. Is there any... Other than your client's desire... Mr. Chair, if I may ask the attorney. Other than your client's desire to, you know, have a determination sooner, I mean, is there any... If this determination were made in August, is that going to set your client back significantly more than... And was there some barrier in this process that got the request in late? So I guess what I'm asking you is, you know, I know that we're kind of being asked to make a determination quick, but on the front end of this, like, was there something that delayed the request coming in 60 days sooner than it did?
So, there was no delay on the...
Okay.
On this submitted. So, the statute sets forth what the notice requirement is. So I filed that with all the four boards, well, the commission and the three boards that were required under the statute on May 15th. So, no delay there. I mean, I respect that the town, under the statute, has 120 days. We were asking that the decision be made. If the town doesn't think that they're going to purchase it, then we'd ask that they not delay it because not only is my client, the seller, involved, but the buyer would like to get moving if the town isn't going to exercise their rights. So, the statute requires that the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board and the assessors get notice and provide the select board with their opinion, their suggestion. So, when I was at the Planning Board meeting last night, there was one member on the board that may be on the Open Space Committee or may have heard, I don't know which it was. But he indicated that they may have some interest. But, you know, with all due respect, I think this was submitted on May 15th. Even though the town has 120 days, I fully respect that. But there's been multiple opportunities that if they had some interest, to give the select board an opinion. So I would request that a decision be made tonight, but I do respect the fact that you certainly have more time.
Yeah, understood. I mean, I think we all know what's going to happen here. And also, just to note, this property is over $300,000. So even if there was interest, I don't think we actually have the money for it right now. So it sounds like we're going to wait and actually let the Open Space Committee chime in so we follow the process as it should happen. Selectmen Emke, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, thanks. Just a couple of things. One, I think the Open Space Committee didn't get the materials to review until recently, possibly, but I thought I saw an email to that effect. But anyway, looking at the calendar, if Open Space meets the 14th, that's the day after our August 13th meeting, which would bump it another day. So I would propose maybe two options here. One is to approve contingent on the Open Space Committee, or not approve, but not take it the right of first refusal, not purchase the land, in other words, or property. Contingent on Open Space Committee not being interested in it. Or an alternative, could the Open Space Committee call an ad hoc meeting solely to review this issue like next week so we could address it on our August 6th meeting?
Heather, would we be able to approve this contingent on that? I don't know if that would really work, would it?
I wouldn't recommend it.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then, can Open Space maybe have a not-hoc meeting just for this agenda item sooner? And no one here can speak to them, but maybe we can go back to them and ask. Because I do feel for the applicant.
Yeah, I do as well.
Having to wait.
Which I voiced, but go ahead. And I appreciate that, right? What I would say is that these... Well, the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, under the statute, to give you their opinion. The other boards, and I'm not making light of their responsibilities, but they're not part of the statutory requirement. And what I'd say with all due respect is that if they suggested that you purchase it, but the Board of Selectmen knows that you don't have the money and wouldn't purchase it, does that form over substance? And, you know, I would ask that if the select board knows that regardless of what the Open Space Committee suggests, you're not going to buy it, then there's no reason for a delay.
I hear you. Go ahead.
I think Mr. Alonso has his hand up.
All right, Mr. Alonso?
So, what I think we should do, since we are within our statutory, you know, limits still, and we do have a policy, whether their input is required by statute, like Planning Board or Conservation, it is our policy. I would probably not want to undermine their input and do it. I understand the position of the applicant and their counsel, but we're not intentionally doing this. We have something in place. I think there is some internal procedures we need to make sure are a little more efficient than they are. But even all that said, we still would be able to do it well within the 120 days. I do concur with Select Board Member Emke, and we should ask the Open Space Committee to have it before our next meeting, or at least by our second meeting in August, not wait for the third. So, I would be for waiting, but I would ask the Open Space Committee to try to give us their input before the middle of August, before their currently scheduled August 14th meeting.
Yeah, so I can reach out and see if they're able to do that. But obviously, I don't know if they are or not. So, if we can try to expedite this, we can, so.
All right, well, I appreciate your consideration.
Yeah, of course, thank you. Have a good night.
So, will we continue to a date certain, just so I...
Sorry, what was your question?
Continue this meeting to the date certain? Would it be the August your next meeting?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, sorry, I didn't hear that. So if they're not able to meet again, we would have to meet on August 20th because that's our first meeting after their next scheduled meeting.
Could I ask to be placed on the agenda for your next meeting, even if it's status? Hey, they didn't get back to us, so that I can keep this on track?
I don't have a problem with that.
And that meeting date is?
August 6th.
August 6th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
So, I move to continue the public hearing to August 6th.
Second.
Any additional discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Selectmen Alonso?
Aye.
Selectmen Emke?
Aye.
Selectmen Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself, the motion passes unanimously. Have a good night. All right, moving on to an update from the Parks Commission Chair on Marshall Park. I'll invite Anita up to the podium.
I'm Anita Shipers, Chairman of the Parks Commission, 63 Chestnut Street. Good to see you all tonight. I was asked to do a brief update tonight regarding the status of the Marshall Park project. And the timing actually is really good because we have some good news that we want to share with the board and with, you know, our residents in town. Since town meeting, where we last presented information about Marshall Park, we now are in a position where we're ready to move ahead with Phase 1, using the existing funds that we already have assigned to the project. So that is really good news. So what it means is that we have $1.643 million to do Phase 1 work of the Marshall Park project. And that Phase 1 work aligns with the work that's in the scope approved under our park grant. So that coincides really well. The six... The $1.6 million comes from a combination of the ARPA funds that the Board of Selectmen had approved, you know, to assign to this project. It comes from a $500,000 park grant that we received from the state, and also the remaining design funds that came from that previous town meeting vote. So the Phase 1 work is going to be a really nice combination of the construction of a pavilion, new basketball courts, pickleball courts, a playground, and a bathroom facility. So that we're getting a lot of bang for our buck with this first phase of the project. And these will end up really being kind of the central core components of the entire project. Other phases will include the playing fields, et cetera. So, to get to this point, in order for us to move ahead, we were required by law to hire an owner's project manager, what I'm going to call an OPM, as I refer to it as I go through this. With the help of the town manager, we were able to procure the services of the firm of Skanska. It's the Boston Division of Skanska OPM section. And with their help, we're going to go through the, you know, the remaining planning, the design, and the bidding and construction of the project. Right now, we are... We have a not-to-exceed contract with them to get us just through the first phase, this Phase 1 of the project. And town manager, I did not bring the dollar amount for the not-to-exceed amount for the OPM contract. Was it 256?
Let me pull it up and...
It's in that range. But anyways, it's monies that we already have that can be assigned to this. So with their help, we are going to be moving ahead, seeking proposals from the design firms that we need to choose the best firm to help us finish the final design of the park, to put together the construction documents, the bid documents, and to go out to bid for construction. We actually have the request for proposals, it's out there now, it's been advertised. And proposals are due in... From qualified firms by August 8th. So we will be going through that review of proposals. Hopefully, we get a good number, and we'll go through that review of proposals in August with the hope that we can choose the best-ranked firm and contract with that best-ranked firm by the, you know, first week or so in September. We actually have a site walk tomorrow with interested firms. We do that to invite people, firms that are interested in considering the project, to come and see the project in person. And it's also a Q&amp;A section that will happen at the library so that they might have questions of us that can help them better their understanding of the project and to decide if they want to put a proposal in and what that proposal might look like for us. So, as I said, we're the first phase. Hopefully, we'll get that contract with the designer in place, under contract in early September. The design work will be, you know, beginning in mid-September. And the first-phase work for the designer contract is a not-to-exceed value of $143,000 just for that Phase 1 design. The way the contract will be structured is that we will be able to continue to work with that designer as additional funds are made available for the additional phases of the work. The schedule calls for construction work to go out to bid in early 2025. So that's... It's coming faster than we know. And we hope to have that construction firm onboard for a groundbreaking in late winter. I know that people are going to be interested in the grants that we've achieved in this because at previous town meetings, we did talk about how we would do our best to achieve awards of as many grants as possible. So the grants that we are able to secure so far are the $500,000 park grant that I described a few moments ago. We've also received verbal approval of a $1 million land and water grant that would help us cover some of the other phases of the park project. That is a conditional grant, though, and we'll be back before the board in a few weeks with more information about that conditional grant and when we might be able to hear if it gets awarded and what the conditions might be. We've also applied for a $136,000 accessibility grant from the Mass Office of Disabilities. And if that's awarded, we'll have funds to help us purchase more handicapped accessible equipment for the playground, which would be really nice. In terms of future funding requests, I see on the agenda that, you know, that was part of the discussion you were hoping to have tonight. Unfortunately, we're not ready yet to discuss what we might be looking for at town meeting. We know we, like, very likely, will be coming to town meeting for a future funding request, but it's premature for me to try to make any statement tonight about what that amount will be, particularly because one of the things that we need is an updated cost estimate that the new designer will be providing us. So while we may vote, you know, at our next meeting or, you know, prior to the deadline of submitting warrant articles for the special town meeting, we don't know yet what that dollar amount associated with will be, and we will work with the designer to determine that. And what I can promise you is that as soon as I have any more information about what it is we're likely looking at for an article for the special town meeting, we will be back here before you to let you know about that. Because one of the things that we find is really important and very helpful to us is that when we come before you, it helps us get the information out to the voters faster as well. So, I do know that the previous chair of the Parks Commission, Anna Lockwood, who spoke earlier this evening, had been working with our town manager previously as to what, you know, the feasibility of requesting some funds at the special town meeting might be. And, you know, that looked pretty positive. But as I said, once we know what we need to ask for, we will be back to you right away with that information. And that's basically it. If you have any specific questions that I can answer, I'd be glad to try. If you have questions that I can't answer tonight, what I will do, promise to do, is to take those back to the Park Commission, and we will work as a group to answer those questions and get back to you with the answers as soon as we can.
Thank you, Anita.
You're welcome.
So I'll open it up to questions, starting with Selectmen Alonso. You're muted.
First, I don't have any questions, but just as a point, Mr. Chair, I think it would be best if we just opened up, instead of going in any particular order, if we can open up discussion just to the board, and the board can, you know, open it up. Otherwise, it feels like we're going in a specific order and it puts people on the spot, just so you're aware. I don't have any questions.
I know. I'm doing that because you guys are remote, and typically, that's what we've done. We have members that are remote, but it's fine.
I realize... I realize we got into that habit. I just hope we get out of that habit.
All right, so does anyone else have questions? I'll just open it up, I don't mind.
No.
No? All right, well, thank you so much for the update.
I just... Because we do have an estimate for the schematic design phase through Ola. So that total estimate was around 8.9 million for the total project at that time?
It was, yep. And there were some decisions that need to be made in terms of how much of that really would need to be included, and more importantly, how much of those prices have changed since that was done? I believe that was done in early January, if I'm correct in my facts, which I'm still learning details of the project. So, that's, you know, one of the things that we specifically want to make sure that we work with the designers to get updated cost estimate of the project.
I'm just wanting the public and the board and eventually the Finance Committee, significant advance notice of, you know, the potential for what would be asked for at town meeting, special town meeting, the longer time to plan, especially with the change and the transition of my position, that it's going to be needed.
Thank you.
All right, I do actually have a question. So is the parking lot included in Phase 1?
It is not.
Or is that a later? It is not?
It's a later phase.
How many phases are there?
I believe it's four in total.
Four, okay.
Although, you know, depending on how it ends up with the design, we may end up combining some.
Okay, sure.
We'll see.
Cool. Well, thank you for the update. I'm excited to see that we're making progress on this, but it sounds like we'll have some follow-ups, so.
You know, it's exciting to think that by, you know, mid-2025, we will actually have some new components of the park for our voters to enjoy.
Yeah.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to take a moment to thank Heather for all the hard work you've been doing for us. I know how hard the job is. You've been doing a great job. Thank you.
You know, personally.
I do. Thank you so much. Take care.
All right, thank you, Anita. Have a good night.
You're welcome. You too.
All right, so we are moving on to interviews, appointments, reappointments, and resignations. I don't see any on the agenda, but we did have some resignations recently from Conservation, right?
I announced that at the last meeting.
It was, okay. The staff and the commissioner?
Oh, sorry, no, that's on my town meeting report.
Oh, okay, that's fine. I'll cover it there. All right, then moving right into the town manager report.
For our board, committee, and commission vacancies, there is one vacancy in the Agricultural Commission, one vacancy in the Architectural Preservation District Commission, one Board of Health vacancy, which is a joint appointment with the Board of Health until the next annual town election, one vacancy appointed by the town moderator for the Capital Planning Committee, one vacancy for the Conservation Commission, three vacancies for the Cultural Council, two associate vacancies for the Green Communities Committee, two vacancies on the Historical Commission that changed due to Mr. Passio's declining the appointment that the board made at the last meeting, so that went from one to two vacancies. One member-at-large vacancies for the Open Space Committee, five vacancies on the Personnel Committee, and two vacancies on the Sewer Commission, which is a joint appointment with the Sewer Commission until the next annual town election. Anyone interested in any of these positions can find the volunteer application form on the town website, return it to the Select Board's office, and if you have any questions on the roles and responsibilities, you can contact our office at 900-888-9999. on the roles and responsibilities, you can contact our office at 978-582-4130, extension 144. For employment opportunities with the town, we have the following positions: a 32-hour a week position for administrative assessing assistant, assistant to the sewer business manager, which is 19 hours a week, assessor data collector, which is 19 hours a week, this is a new position in fiscal '25, conservation administrative assistant, which is 10 hours a week, and this is, was a resignation we received the end of last week, the interim town manager, which is contractual, land use director, 40 hours a week, network administrator, 40 hours a week, public safety desk clerk, 40 hours a week, and seasonal cemetery labor, and those hours vary. Information on each of these positions can be found on the website under job opportunities. For staffing updates, the conservation administrative assistant, Stephanie Dandero, submitted her letter of resignation, and her last day will be August 1st. Stephanie gave her reason of leaving due to finding full-time employment as the conservation administrative assistant position is 10 hours a week, and she was working three part-time jobs. I have periodically checked in with Karen Chapman from our regional planning agency to see if they would be able to assist the town with staff from MRPC for the role of the planning director until the position is permanently filled. They had two planning vacancies at one time, and those were recently filled, so now they are fully staffed. And the assistant town manager, HR director, will be meeting with them to discuss our needs for temporary filling this role this week. Assistant town manager, HR director, and principal assessor have interviews scheduled for tomorrow for both the administrative assessing assistant position and the data, data collector position. Assistant town manager, HR director will be scheduling, scheduling interviews for the network administrator position in August. Assistant town manager, HR director has forwarded eight qualified applicants to the DPW director and sewer business manager since this position was posted on May 2nd. To date, no interviews have been held due to ongoing issues the sewer business manager has been experiencing with munis and the time needed to get demand bills out and regular commitment bills out in August. The person that we contacted for the inspector of weights and measures position turned down the offer for the position due to the amount that is paid for the position.
You said they can do it to be on what?
That, for the amount that's paid. There's 3,500 paid annually for this position to do those inspections. We're waiting to hear back from the state on the costs for them to conduct these inspections. We anticipate hearing from them by next week. Update on request for proposals and invitation for bids. Bids for trash and recycling services are due July 24th. Bids for the library solar shade project are due July 31st. Proposals for Marshall Park designer services are due August 8th. And bids for the senior center roof project are due August 29th. The bid is written for the senior center roof project, that the work, once it is awarded, will be done in 30 days. An update on 9/25 Mass Ave. As part of the real estate technical assistance grant through Mass Development, BSC Group requested we put the relevant documents on the town website. This was done last week by our IT administrative assistant, Karen McCarthy, and it was placed as a sub-page on the town manager's page. I've worked with the assessor's office to obtain names of appraisers that hold their certified general appraisal license required to appraise commercial real estate. Once this is conducted, the RFP can be put out to bid. That's my town manager report.
Any questions for Heather?
I just have one. I don't see it in the Google Drive. Can you just drop it in there?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to miss the town manager reports.
As will I.
As delivered by Heather. Not that we're not going to have another town manager report.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Heather. All right. Moving on to current business. So the first thing I have on here is something I just called select board staff appreciation. So I've been spending more time in town buildings and talking to more staff members lately, and this is just an idea that came out of those conversations. So obviously morale is still an issue. We've had several resignations recently, and with the transition to an interim and eventually a new permanent town manager, I think it would be a good idea for staff to have a little more interaction with select board members, just to know that we are here as a resource, especially during this transition period. So I don't know, this could be an organized event. We've done things like this in the past. Or it could just be something a lot more informal, that based on our availability, we sort of drop in and maybe just bring coffee and donuts, or something like that. But I just want to get some initial reactions. What do you guys think about this? Is this something that you think maybe we should organize or work on?
I have no objection to a, to such a, an event, as long as the event is kept at a high level of just appreciating what they do. I just caution, and I don't, I know this wasn't your intent, Mr. Chair, but I caution against getting too involved. When you, when you meet with employees and it's things like this, it can easily stray into day-to-day what's going on, which of course is not the purview of the select board. So we have a very fine line to walk. Not that it's not walkable, but we should be aware of the line of this.
Yep, I hear you.
I, yeah, I think something you had said was that we're a resource, and I, I think we are a limited resource. But I think that this is important. I know that you and I have talked about this, and, you know, I think that especially during periods of transition, I think it's important, not just now, but just getting in the habit of the select board doing something for our staff, whether it's showing up with coffee and donuts or things of that nature, maybe healthier foods than coffee and donuts.
That's fine.
Maybe some apples and pears, seasonal fruit from our local farms. But I think, I think it would be a good thing if, if, you know, amongst us, if we can kind of pool our own resources and, and start thinking of things we can do to show support.
All right, cool. Selectman Mkey, do you want to add anything?
No, I mean, I agree with, with the comments that I've made thus far. I think the challenge will be, you know, finding time, being able to get to town buildings during operating hours.
Yeah, I get that. I know. I recognize that there are going to be some logistics to manage with that. But, all right, I just wanted to get some initial reaction, so thank you.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, as a, as a next step on this one, I mean, you know, I know that Selectman Mkey, you know, has to travel a little bit to get to work, and so it is, you know, as does Selectman Moore. And so, you know, there are going to be some challenges on, on scheduling. But I think that, you know, contribution-wise, and, and perhaps as we kind of talk through this, that there might be an opportunity, you know, I don't, I don't know when, you know, all the shift changes are, if there's end-of-date briefings, but, you know, there may be opportunities for the staff, for the members that are at a town during the day to be able to, to do something, you know, 6 o'clock or, you know, something when, when some staff at least are in, or even during a snowstorm. I mean, that's kind of, I think, a biggie is, you know, showing up during a snowstorm if we're all in town with some, some coffee and donuts. I think those things go a long way in showing appreciation to staff.
All right. Thank you. All right. So moving on, recreation director increase in hours. So we received a request to increase the recreation director's hours from 19 to 28. This is something that would have to be approved by both the select board and the finance committee per the salary administration plan. It would be paid for by the park's revolving account, which already has the money in it. They have about $74,000, not an exact figure, but this will cost $37,759.30 for salary and benefits. Heather, is there anything else you want to add?
My calculation of impact was slightly less when I looked at...
It may have been updated since I got that letter. So, okay. I'll let you give the up-to-date figures then.
34,545, approximately.
Oh, okay. So it's a couple thousand dollars lower.
That's cost-inclusive of a family plan that we budget for, for any person that's going from non-benefited to benefited, not knowing what plan they'll choose, and the salary for that adjustment in hours, which would be a change in rate in around March.
Is there anything else, or?
Outside of what you said, I mean, the reasoning behind it is due to the insufficient time allotted for this person to accomplish all their responsibilities with that position, and also knowing that with the project, Marshall Park project coming on, there's going to be added responsibility for processing additional invoices for the OPM, the designer, construction portions of that project as well. An increase in hours would allow for additional programming to happen within Parks and Rec, and this could be pulled back to the original hours if we found it was not beneficial. Also, I want to note, it's, as far as retaining employees, I think this, there is a revenue source to supplement what the town appropriation is, unlike other instances where we've requested an increase in hours for position. So this is a kind of unique situation, but this, I think, would help retain this employee.
All right. I'll open it up for questions or comments from anyone who wants to just jump in, since that's what we're doing.
Chair?
I think the benefited, you know, benefits make a difference. I think as the town manager noted earlier about the conservation role, that, you know, the staff member had three part-time jobs, and so, you know, was looking for a full-time. And so I think, you know, when you have staff and, and you want to work with them, the reality of, of, I think, our day and age and just life is that, you know, people need a little bit more money, and if you're, you know, you can't live off of 19 hours a week, you can't live off of 28 either, but you certainly can't live off of 19. And so, you know, sometimes that, that little bump up in hours for someone that's looking for part-time work, that's, that's right in the cusp. And then the benefits, you know, not everyone takes the family plan. I know everyone budgets for it, but not everyone takes it, and not everyone needs it, and so there, there could potentially be some cost savings. But I'm just in the mindset that as we think of roles, sometimes, you know, I've said this previously, we think of our own needs and we think of, hey, you know, but we also have to think, who's the person that's going to fit, sit in this position? What is that person going to need to stay in the position? And so I support the request.
Selectman Alonso.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I first have a question for the town manager. This, the recreation director is the highest-level paid employee that's dedicated to the parks. Is that, would that be a correct statement?
Correct.
Okay. And am I also correct that what I've read is that with the hours, it seems like the hours that are requested are certainly covered by what the position is being asked to do and therefore warranted? But I am understanding that this, this is a new addition of hours that could be revisited if desired or if wanted in the FY '26 budget cycle. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So with both those things in mind, I, I am for the increase in hours.
Selectman Mkey.
So my question follows up a bit on Mr. Alonso's last comment. Are these hours just for FY '25, or do they automatically, the, the position automatically have these extra hours going into FY '26 unless town meeting changes that?
This could be revisited during the development of the FY '26 budget. So it could, if the, there is no benefit or additional benefit, or we're finding that the additional hours are not needed, it could be pulled back. I tend to doubt that's going to be the case. I think you'll see that additional revenue is produced by additional hours and the availability of the rec director to work more hours. That is a possibility for that to be changed.
Right. But if it's not discussed, the default is the extra hours are present going into FY '26?
That would be discussion to make sure there is an available source for those funding. So if it's not supplemented by the revolving fund, it would have to be in the omnibus budget to be fully funded.
Okay. And has finance committee?
They have not met.
Commented yet?
They meet Thursday to discuss this.
This Thursday?
Correct.
All right. So it sounds like a majority of the board is going to support this. I support it as well. Selectman Mkey, are you inclined to support this right now?
I am. I'm just wondering if, if we need to hear from finance committee, or if we should.
Okay. I'll ask Heather, do you think there's any reason why we should wait to hear the finance committee's discussion on this? And just, just as a note, like, this would only get approved if we approve it and the finance committee approves it as well. So if they run into some sort of issue and they don't vote to support it, then it wouldn't take into effect anyway, so.
I would say it's really the discretion of the board.
Yeah.
If they want to hear what the finance committee has to say about it, if they bring up points that aren't, haven't been considered, that you would like to reconsider, that's another issue.
Yeah. I'm just thinking they are an advisory committee. We should let them advise.
Well, they're advisory to committee to town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I would say, I would say on this regard, since it requires both, we lose nothing if we approve it. If they come up with issues that are not, that we haven't brought to our own attention, we certainly have the ability to revisit and revote it with their, with their new issues. So for expedition's sake, I would say that there's no, since it has to be done by both, we don't lose anything. If nobody has an objection here, we can approve it. If they approve it, then it's done. If they don't approve it and they say, "We don't approve it for these reasons," then we can come back to it on our next meeting. We don't lose anything.
Yep. I'm in agreement with that. How about you?
So am I.
All right. So is there a motion then?
I would move that we approve the additional hours for the recreational director as presented by the town manager.
Second.
Any additional discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Selectman Alonso?
Aye.
Selectman Mkey?
Aye.
Selectman Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to fiscal year 2024, third quarter financial report. So Ezekiel isn't here to present the report. He will be presenting it in person Thursday night to the finance committee, but I'm told that it looks good and that there are no anomalies at all. So is there anything that you want to speak to on this, Heather?
No, I think you summarized it. The, are there any questions from the board on the presentation that was provided? Everything is looking on track as third quarter revenues and expenditures.
No questions.
I have no questions.
Me neither.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we'll jump down to old business now, and we'll start with public communications policy discussion. So members of the board wanted to readdress this, so I will just open it up to discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Do, do we want to, do, we have minutes?
No, so, no.
We want to skip over?
So there's a weird formatting thing with the agenda now, where we did it for a reason because we wanted to rearrange meetings that we had with the police chief so that they would be back-to-back. But now, current business is still on top of old business, and to me, it just makes sense to do minutes, warrants, action items, committee reports at the end, so I'm just sort of jumping around here.
Okay.
But thank you for bringing it up. I know that I skipped that, and it was intentional.
Okay.
So on the public policy that was voted, introduced and voted last week, I sent an email to the board indicating that it, the pass setting of it that night violated our own policies. That is why I asked this to be put on there. So at that last meeting, I asked and was disheartened and frustrated and angered that with two members asking for more time, for language that we had just received that evening via email by another member, and with the town manager also wanting to review more of this, that, that request was not afforded. And yet, as soon as I got home and I reviewed our policy, our own policies about how policy should be accepted, clearly as day, that we violated our own policy. And we would have not done that if we had just allowed it to go, you know, for the additional period as requested, which I would ask in the future. At least as of now, I think we should rescind that vote and put it on a meeting... At least as of now, I think we should rescind that vote and put it on a meeting when we have the full board again and we can revisit it. And we could discuss the merits of the actual policy with all of us having had enough time to review its potential impact and the causes why it's being asked to be passed and why we would need to pass it, et cetera.
Any additional discussion? All right, well, it doesn't look like this has moved at all. I think we just need to hit pause and readdress this when the entire board is here in the same room, but I agree that we need to continue having this discussion and it will need to be readdressed as Selectman Alonso brought up.
Mr. Chair?
But I don't think that's going to happen tonight. Yes?
If I may, for the interim, I wanted to be clear and I wanted to see the consensus of the board that until such time that we revisit it and revote it, that officially we have not adopted that policy because it violated our own policy. Do we at least agree on that? That until such time as we discuss and vote on it again, the policy officially should not be adopted?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
You can, sure.
I, I think, you know, Mr. Alonso, I think, brings up a good point, which is that, you know, we, we create policies for, you know, a reason and therefore boards to kind of guide future boards on how to go about, you know, conducting business. I think, you know, we, you know, we have a lot of policies and I openly acknowledge that while I verified conflict with the charter and, and I think it was policy 2.11, that I, I was not aware of the policy that, that Mr. Alonso brought to our attention. You know, I, I think that I, I don't think I, in this instance, can, can agree that it doesn't have any effect. I think that the, I, I'm open to having this conversation when the full board is here, but I read it as the, as the policy being in effect.
So I, I don't think our vote at the last meeting should be valid. I don't think the proposed new policy should be in effect because it did violate two of our existing select board policy, or two parts of an existing select board policy.
So my understanding of this, to put it bluntly, is that our policies are more so a guideline and we also violated our policies when we did reappointments this year to no fault of anyone, but I don't think anyone is going to say that those reappointments aren't valid. Should we have done it that way? Probably not. And as chair, you know, I will take responsibility for not knowing the policies inside and out and bringing that to a vote. But I do think that it would be in our best interest to at least wait until we have the full board present to really discuss this and then we can continue having this conversation. So.
I, I think we can discuss when the full board is here, but I think in the interim, we should, we should revert back to the previous, I mean, to the, to what was the policy. The new policy should not be in effect because it required four votes to be passed. I don't think that's a guideline. I think that's, that's pretty clear.
Yeah, well, select board policies, they are guidelines and I don't think we should do this often. I think sometimes it's warranted, to put it very bluntly, but.
If I may?
Sure.
Like, why have policies at all?
Exactly. Who's to say it's warranted or not?
If you're not going to follow your policies, why have them at all?
I, to answer your question, Heather, I mean, I, I think that policies first are, are guides, but they're also, they're also regulations in effect. You know, I feel quite strongly about like our alcohol policy, which coming into this role, I had no idea I was going to have such strong reactions to issuing alcohol licenses. You know, and I think that I've sought compliance with that policy. I, I think that we become aware sometimes of, of, of things and, you know, we have to be, it's hard. It's hard to have a, a, a conflict with each other. It's hard, you know, for me to have a conflict with my peers to put us in a challenging situation. You know, I think that the policy that I proposed and voted for, I strongly support. And I don't think there's a prohibition on, on anything. It's just adding in a, a step of communication and verification. But I don't, I don't think it prohibits anyone from being able to perform their, their duties effectively.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
First of all, I could not, the town manager, because I'm not in person, got there before I did because I'm remote, but clearly I could not agree more with her statement. I mean, policies, what's the point of having policies if you don't follow them, especially ones that change the rules about how you make policies? So if any policy should be super, you know, sacrosanct, it should be how you make policies. To equate that we didn't follow our policy for appointments, are you really going to equate that with politicizing potential press releases of everything the town releases and, and going into the authority of the town manager or any other department head, which is what this policy does? Are we really going to say that ram-rodding a, a policy on the same night within, within the time that the select board members had, you know, seen the text, we had 15 minutes to decide on it and the majority just thought, oh, let's do it? I mean, there's reasons why that first, that policy 1.03 is there. It's absolutely to protect that and to have a discussion. You know, the school committee, when they have policies, they have three separate readings and they're there so people can think about the policy, think if there are conflicts, think about the context and provide an opportunity even for the public to provide input about the new policy. This is not a nothing policy. This is not like something that has no bearing on anybody. This is a very, very serious policy that potentially impinges and, and crosses over the line of authority of many employees in town. So they're not the same thing as our appointment of, you know, a fence viewer, for instance.
Selectman Emke.
I wholeheartedly agree. I mean, I am extremely uncomfortable between the fact of getting the policy to review while sitting at the select board meeting. I mean, I, I've thought about it and I even have more questions now than I did last week. And, and to just selectively ignore policies and how, who decides what policy is followed when? I mean, we might as well just take the entire document and just throw it in the circular recycle bin. I mean, this is, this makes me extremely uncomfortable and I, I can't say that strongly enough, that I, I don't agree that this policy should be in place. I think we should revisit when the full board is present.
I also think it changes the board and it says that, to the board, it says to the public that anytime there's a three-member majority, we can do or change anything we want. That's what it says. I mean, there's no procedures, since they're all haphazard and they're all, you can do them when you want and support them and enforce them when you want, then it's just the majority rules on everything. So what's the point of having a booklet that we spent oodles and oodles of time reviewing and trying to perfect?
Generally, you know, I, I think that what, my opinion is, I think that what Selectman Alonso and Selectman Emke are saying is pretty much one point. I mean, I don't, I don't really disagree with them. I, I think that exceptional situations in which the majority of the board is in agreement, I, I, my, from my perspective, I, I agree with Mr. Alonso, I agree with Selectman Emke. And in the same breath, I also believe that, that exceptional circumstances may require the majority of the board to make a exceptional, make an exception. I, I don't, I'm not a believer in a lot of regulation, as everyone knows, but I am a believer in following the rules. But I'm also a believer in majority and respecting it. You know, so I, I mean, I think that we're, I think everyone has a valid point tonight. There's nothing, I mean, there's nothing that Selectman Alonso said or Selectman Emke said that I'm going to disagree with. I mean, in the sense of the attitude about our policies, the perspective that we're supposed to spend time working on them, they're supposed to be, you know, something that, that we visit multiple times that is good policymaking and I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that at all. I think the circumstance under which the policy was proposed was exceptional and that's, that's my perspective on it. And, and, and that's my perspective.
Well, Mr. Chair, in all, in all, in all fairness, that, the policy's emergency situation was not presented last week, at least not to anything I saw or heard in that conversation, number one. And number two, you know, my colleague who just spoke, clearly he does this all the time. He did this last week with the traffic study. He'll say that usually I really support the idea of data, except now. And tonight, it's, of course I support the rule, the rule of policies and the rules and the guidelines and I don't disagree with anything my, you know, that Mr. Alonso, Mr. Emke said. And in the same breath says, except that I don't agree with him in this case, which means that he didn't agree with me to begin with. Because my whole point is if we have the policy and the policy says we shouldn't have been able to pass last week, then we shouldn't have a policy in effect until we have a full board to discuss the context and the ramifications of the policy. You can't have it both ways. Either you for the policy and it should stand that the vote from last week should be rescinded or you don't agree with the policy and therefore you can do anything you want. But you can't say both things because they are untenable. Logic does not hold both of those. And there was no emergency situation, at least that was brought to this board's attention that would supersede that.
Yeah, Mr. Alonso, I mean, I, I think I just, I think I always reserve the right to change my mind about things, but I mean, I just don't agree. I mean, I, you know, you made a reference to last week, you know, with data and I, I thought I was pretty clear. I thought we had enough data. I didn't think we needed additional data. You know, I thought the data was pretty clear. And when it came to the, to the policy that the residents were asking for to drop a spiel in it. But I mean, I think that we can hopefully agree to disagree. I don't, I don't have much more to contribute to this tonight.
All right. So it doesn't sound like this is moving anywhere tonight, but we will revisit this at our next meeting when everyone is here.
So the two members who are present, I just want to be clear to anybody listening for this now and in the future, you do not want to rescind it and to your mind, this policy is in effect. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
That's my perspective as well.
I'm going to quote our existing policy, four votes of a five-member board is necessary for adoption because adopting a new policy is a serious matter. And we're just going to ignore that.
We're not going to ignore it. We're going to come back to it, but like I said.
We're ignoring it. If we say it's in effect, that would have passed with three votes. We're ignoring it.
We're ignoring it. Right. At least admit that what you're doing is ignoring it.
All right. Well, we're going to come back to this when we are all present in the same room and we can discuss.
Can you, can you just state what the current, what the situation is now? What is the, what is the current policy in play with regards to public communication?
It's what was passed at our last meeting.
You want to read it? I mean, is that what she's asking? I don't, I don't know.
No, I just want to hear because it was, I don't believe it was passed and even that policy says approval of the board. What level of approval? Three votes, four votes, five votes? What's approval of the board mean? I mean, it's just, it's not ready. I don't.
Every week, I believe that this board can't possibly go more astray of what our rules and regulations should be and not disregard the, the service to the citizens, the service to our own members, the service to our own policies. But every week, certain members of this board do that and build up a whole record of inconsistencies and things that make me embarrassed to be part of this board, I have to say. Both of you make me embarrassed to be part of this board.
For, for the public record, I want to, to tell the public to go, just search the town website for select board policy and procedures, go to section 1.02, the second paragraph. That's what we're talking about. Plain as day English and we're ignoring that.
All right. I think we've said everything that we need to say that is productive on this for tonight. So moving on to interim town manager search, possible vote on interim town manager contract. We discussed our agreement in executive session to extend an offer to Carter Terranzini. Is there anything else we want to discuss on that tonight? All right, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the contract as discussed in executive session with contingent upon labor council reviewing and approving it and not bringing anything to our attention. I do this to expedite the process again as I just did with the recreation director.
Second.
Any additional discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Selectman Alonso.
Aye.
Selectman Emke.
Aye.
Selectman Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye for myself, the motion passes unanimously. Town manager salary range. So Julie is working on some comp analysis, but I did also look on the MMA website just to see what communities who are currently looking for town managers are paying. And the two that I saw are Sandy's Field, which I've never actually heard of before, and Randolph. Neither of them are a good comparison to us though. So Sandy's Field has 1,000 residents and a budget of $3 million. They're paying about 85,000. Randolph, which is technically a city, but still has a position called town manager and assistant town manager, their budget is a little larger than ours, 70-something million. And for their town manager, they're paying 215,000. So again, it's not really a good compensation because their budget's a lot larger than ours. But I did the math and if you adjust what they're paying versus the size of their budget, it's actually a pretty similar salary to what we currently pay. So personally, I'll need a little bit more data before I know what I think is an appropriate salary range. The postings, by the way, for these didn't actually include the numbers, so I think we have some more time to really discuss this when we get more data. So is there anything we want to add on this tonight?
If I may ask, Mr. Alonso, how soon this, the committee is looking for a number from the select board on this?
We don't have a specified date. Obviously, the sooner the better because the sooner we can, especially if we engage with the recruit, recruiter, because they're going to want to know so they know who to go to and they can speak knowledgeably about the position and that's part of, I'm sure, what most candidates are going to want to know, pretty close to the beginning of the questioning about where it is and what kind of town it is and then how much it pays. So the earlier the better.
If I may ask a follow-up to Mr. Alonso. You mentioned earlier about looking to hire a consultant, search recruiting firm. Do you, do you have a kind of a timeline on how soon, given the procurement of that and that that would take place?
We are interviewing the candidate or the firm at our next meeting, which is, I confirm, next Wednesday. But obviously we can't commit to it. We just want to know if it's a, a good fit. And if so, we want to be able to act right away. Again, I mean, every part we delay on delays getting a permanent town manager.
Selectman Emke, you have your hand up.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Alonso as being a member of the screening committee. Do you think the recruiting firm could help us in defining the, the range, salary range? And can we, or would it cause undue delay to ask them to provide input?
If, if we engage them, I don't, I can't speak to it. I have not spoken to them, but I would assume as part of, if this is what they do for a living, I'm sure they could provide valuable input about who they placed and where they placed. And if that, if recruitment of town managers and town administrators across the Commonwealth is what they do, I'm sure they have a good handle on what the salary ranges are.
I would, I would like their, their input if we could. I think they would have their finger more in the pulse of, of what's going on.
That's fine, but of course we can't do that until we engage them.
I know, I know.
Yeah. So I was going to bring that up when we talked about ARPA, but they definitely are going to have insight to that because from what I'm aware, they're responsible for like 60% or something like that of town manager searches. So they definitely have this data.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
Um, because I watched the, the recordings of the screening committee meetings. It sounds like you're going to seek, assuming we engage in, in contract with the recruiting firm. firm, we will seek their input on the ad, that will post it on MMA. Is that correct?
Repeat again, it cut out on my end. I apologize.
Are we, assuming we go ahead and contract with the recruiting firm, will they be providing input on the job posting for MMA? Or is the committee planning on posting that sooner without, without their input?
Currently, we are on our, a schedule to advertise the MMA on our own. If, if we engage in this firm before that goes live, then we will use them. If not, we will post it, and if it gets revised by the recruiter, we will just revise it. It's an online post, and the printed version doesn't go out until the end, the next month anyway, because we missed this month's deadline, for a printed version of the beacon.
I think the beacon is actually maybe even later. I think there was only one beacon issued for the summer.
Oh, well, there you go. So, I haven't looked at them.
Yeah.
But if, we're gonna do one regardless. If we get them, if we get them online beforehand, we will obviously engage them.
Okay. So it sounds like we're probably gonna pursue hiring this contractor, and is everyone on board with at least having them provide their advice and feedback on the salary range?
Yes.
Okay.
Fine with that.
All right. Well, it sounds good to me.
I, just to be clear, Mr. Chair, we haven't, we as a board have not committed, because we haven't even interviewed them, but we want the ability to know that we can if we need to. So if we allot money in this meeting or whenever, from wherever, we wanna make sure, I wanna make sure I don't mislead people. We haven't voted on, yes, that's what we're doing. We are pursuing that avenue, but we wanna have the money available so that we can pull the trigger if we need to.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarification. All right. Any additional discussion on this for tonight? All right. Moving on to the outdoor dining policy. So I do have a draft, but there are still some things in flight right now regarding the application process that I am still working out. Annie's in the office right now, so I haven't been able to really go through that with her. So we did extend the temporary policy, so it's not like we don't currently have one and that this is like very urgent. So we can just wait until we have the full board here to further review this. So then up next is ARPA. We sent out the email. We've received about five or six requests so far, but since the window is still open, I don't think it would be appropriate to really talk about the requests that we have so far. So I think we can hold off until August to start really going through those. We did get some guidance from the Treasury Department, and maybe Heather can speak more to this, but we do need to have everything under contract by the end of the year. So that was actually confirmed. So this is going to be a quick process, probably to try to get everything allocated by like September.
I would say you wanna have everything in place by the end of August.
The end of August? Yeah. Okay. It's gonna be a fast turnaround. I think it's doable, because there is not a lack of items that we could use this money for. So... All right. Is there any discussion, or do we wanna talk about the town manager consultant now?
I, I do, I do wanna comment on, on the ARPA review, and that is, we should make sure we do a full review of every item, top to bottom, that we've allotted money for and see where it is in the contract, uh, in the contract timeline to make sure, again, because if there are projects that haven't even started and take a long time for RFPs, et cetera, we have to rescind that and reallocate to other places. So we have to go line by line, not just the new projects, but not just the new requests, I meant, but all existing ones, to make sure we do not miss December 31st contractual deadlines for those monies.
Yep.
Which means we should probably ask for updates from all the parties who had funds allocated to see where they stand.
Yeah. I know Heather has been doing a lot of this already, and just looking through this spreadsheet here, it looks like they're all, I don't think there's any that aren't at least under agreement if they haven't already been completed, right?
Really?
I brought up in my email to the board about the money for the Parks Commission for Marshall Park, that it needs to be decided, the amount specifically, and what contract they associated with, because you can't re-obligate those funds after December 31st. So for instance, if 800,000 was committed to the construction portion of that project, then that after December 31st can't be changed to some other, um, need for Marshall Park.
Okay. Just making a note of that. Other than that, though, I mean, everything looks like it's in a good spot that's currently allocated?
The municipal building design.
Yep. We have to do the RFP on that.
Okay.
And I sent a, forwarded an update from the Sewer Commission on that project.
I'm comfortable tonight moving forward with the allocation of $15,000 to support the town manager, um, recruiting company. And that way, it, it allows the committee to make a determination if they wanna pursue that. If they don't, we'll hear back from Mr. Alonso, and we can always reallocate those funds.
As am I. And it sounds like everyone else is too, right?
Well, I would, I would ask the town manager if there's any other monies in the budget outside of ARPA that we could use for such a request.
Only the reserve fund that I could think of for that request. It's an unanticipated.
So do we, do, would you have a recommendation of, I mean, if we can use the reserve fund, is there anything else vying for the reserve fund?
Right now, no.
ARPA, we can use for anything.
So do you have a recommendation?
As far as the reserve fund or ARPA? Um... I think, um, right now, there are no other requests, but it's early in the budget year for the reserve fund. We typically haven't had to tap into the reserve fund. We've reallocated those funds at the annual town meeting towards deficit in the snow and ice budget, allowed by law, but we typically haven't had to tap into that. We do have funds set aside for the, within the reserve fund in the unanticipated, um, unknown amount that the trash and recycling contract will be.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I would, I would probably make the recommendation for financial flexibility is if we approve the ARPA, but then make a request of the reserve fund, therefore the board, that, that screening committee will know next week that they have some funding, and where that funding comes from is still unknown, but at least we know we have ARPA. But if we can get the reserve fund transfer, that would put more money, that are flexibility, into, into what we can apply the ARPA money to.
Yep, I agree. I mean, there's no harm in allocating 15,000 for it tonight, and if we find somewhere else to use funds for it, we can always reallocate it. So I'm not concerned about that. So, is there a motion?
I would move that we assign $15,000 for a recruiter, recruiting firm for the town manager screening committee, and additionally, that we request $15,000 as a reserve fund transfer from the finance committee for the same.
Second.
Any additional discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Selectman Alonso?
Aye.
Selectman Emke?
Aye.
Selectman Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. The motion passes unanimously. Anything else about ARPA that we wanna discuss tonight? All right. Sounds good. Moving on to draft financial policy manual. So Heather sent this out to staff and boards, and I have not received any feedback yet, so there isn't anything relating to feedback for us to review tonight. Is there anything else you wanna add on this, Heather?
No.
Okay. And then, moving on to board and committee handbook, this is in the same situation. I haven't received anything either, so is this also just sort of on the agenda so that's on our radar?
Just to keep, put it on your radar. Keep it on your radar.
All right. Cool. So next, this was a revision that Heather requested pretty late. So sign inter municipal agreement with Lemonster for wastewater collection, treatment and disposal. So I will let her introduce this.
This is the inter municipal agreement with Lemonster, and this was brought to the board, board previously, and there's been some very minor revisions that have been, um, viewed and approved, and Lemonster is looking for the town to sign off on this.
Okay. So I haven't had a chance to look at this yet, but just going through here, um...
Everything's redlined that has changed.
Right. So some references to state law have been changed. I see a grammar change. Um, yeah, this, it all looks very minor. I don't see any changes in terms of substance yet. So here's one thing that was changed. So section four, it was called hold harmless slash indemnification, indemnification was struck out and release was added, but it looks like this is still sort of not really substantial.
If I may.
Yeah. So how's this? Go ahead.
To the town manager, has the sewer commission been able to take a look at this, and is that usually something that they do in this process?
Um, that the sewer commission? Um... This, yes, so I'm, I'm under the assumption, because this was sent to me by the sewer business manager, that the sewer commission has fully endorsed this, and this is the final version from our council as well.
Okay. Any other questions for the town manager on this?
I was going to ask those two questions.
Okay.
If it has been passed by this elected sewer commission, who I know is deeply involved in the negotiations of the new agreement, and if it's been reviewed by town council and we're looking at our own town council's revision, then I am for the adoption of it.
All right. Sounds good. Is there a motion?
A move that we, we have, how is it written in the agenda? I don't have the agenda.
Inter municipal agreement with Lemonster.
So I, I move that we approve the inter municipal agreement between Lemonster and Lunenburg Sewer Commission.
Second.
As presented.
Any additional discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Selectman Alonso?
Aye.
Selectman Emke?
Aye.
Selectman Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. The motion passes unanimously. All right. So moving up to minutes, there are minutes in the drive from July 16th. I do have some notes for it. Does anyone else have any feedback?
I have one.
In a way, I'm not at time to review it.
I would ask that the, the votes be included in the minutes rather than just passed, say what the, the vote tally was.
Yeah. So it's, um, kinda related to one thing that I had. So in the beginning, when we moved into executive session, passed by roll call vote, it has to actually be listed out on that. So we can just do that all throughout the minutes. And then the other thing that I had, um, under announcements, it says that I reiterated that the meetings are broadcast live and recordings would be available on multiple platforms, and that I confirmed that no further public comments were being taken via call, which is not accurate. I did not make that announcement. And just as a note, so we're trying out an AI tool to generate these minutes, so I think that's sort of what we're working through with these. But I do think that we just have to like really make sure that we're looking through them and sort of catching these things. But, anything else?
Yeah, um, I, I agree. I don't, I don't think that tonight the minute should be adopted. I think that it's important historically to record how members vote as noted, so beyond just the result. Also, I know that, you know, we're kinda playing with different fonts and colors here. I, I, when you go to copy something that, that's this light blue, it doesn't always come out very well. So I would just ask that we stay with, uh, same color, with black throughout.
All right. Is there any other feedback? Looks like we're not gonna vote to approve this tonight.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I, to your comment that we're trying out an AI thing, I, I hope it is true. I don't mind the trying out of AI, but somebody who, if, if somebody is not actually writing the minutes, somebody has to at least review the minutes before it gets to the board. The board shouldn't be reviewing raw AI minutes. That, that is a waste of the board's time to do, and somebody should be, if they're not writing it, they should at least be reviewing them. And that should save them a lot of time, but they should still make sure it's accurate to the best of their knowledge.
Yep, I hear you.
Mr. Chair, I just addressed that.
Sure. Go ahead.
That I have previously broached with, um, the executive assistant, that although we're using this tool, that it's still gonna have to be checked against the actual recording to make sure that everything's accurate.
Mm-hmm. All right. Looks like we have a good list of feedback here. Is there anything else before we move on?
I just wanna, you know, acknowledge to the office and, you know, the attempts to try to bring a new technology, and AI is a great tool, you know, and, and, you know, finding tools that will make the work more efficient, I think, is, is a good, great way to go. So I certainly applaud the energy. I think that this format can be probably hand tighten up, but I think it's a, certainly a step in the right direction. And then also just wanna acknowledge that, you know, these are minutes from last week that we're talking about this week. And so certainly there's an expert, you know, it seems to be expediting the process of getting them out, because, you know, it can take a long time to sit, listen to a meeting that lasts three hours and then write down the minutes. I mean, that's, it ends up being more than three hours to do it, because you gotta listen and, and transcribe. So it's a lot of time that goes into these things. So I just wanna acknowledge the efforts and applaud them.
Absolutely. All right. Moving on to warrants. Sorry. Here's one here, too. All right. We have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $479,454.47. So we're only gonna get two signatures today, so we're gonna need someone to go to town hall to sign this as soon as possible.
I think the other way around that, if I recall, and, and is, is to the town manager for the majority of the board to designate the chair to sign. Can we do that for warrants?
I think you would have to have that on your agendas.
Got it. Okay.
And another accounts payable warrant in the amount of $151,597.12. Action items.
I have two. So, um, last week, you know, we received a presentation from, from, or a request, it was on our agenda, from residents who live in the Flat Hill Road area, requesting to decrease the speed limit. And, and, you know, this is somewhat of a comment, but also an action item. I would hope that the board would be willing to revisit this sooner than later. I, I think that part of the reason why the board, and I don't know, I accept that the reason, as I see it, that the select board gets to decide speed limits, when there's no requirement for any of us to sit here and have any experience at all with speed, is because there is a, a line in my view between, you know, what someone may determine to be safe for a road in terms of what's passable versus what residents themselves who live on those roads and elect us may decide to be an appropriate speed limit. I think that the, you know, even the information that we received, if it was not today or yesterday, or yesterday, this week, that was kind of a initial review of, of the current traffic survey. I mean, it, it largely is repetitious of the previous one in indicating that, you know, not a significant percentage of cars are going over the speed limit. I think that what we saw was 3% or, or 2.8 and 3.4% respectively, which is pretty consistent with previous reports. But those handful of cars, I mean, one of them was going 62 miles an hour. Um, you know, and so some of these cars are, are traveling at a high rate of speed in which residents do not feel safe. We know that the average speed is relatively, is already below 30 miles an hour, and so I just would urge the board to reconsider this sooner than later. And the second thing I wanted to bring to our attention is, we received an email earlier today, and I also received a call, um, from Chaplain. And I, I just wanna highlight what the request and the problem is. Um, you know, Chaplain has, has operated a, you know, car, um, has sold cars in our community for decades. for decades. And in the course of that time, they've had to have minor changes to the language of their license. At one point, they stopped selling Pontiac. And they were able to come into the office and get Pontiac removed from their license without an action of the board. At one point, they, they stopped being a General Motors dealership. And they were able to come to the office and get General Motors taken off their license and the license was issued without an action of the board. And what the request is now is that the license that they were issued last year, in which they came before us, clearly articulated that they are no longer in the retail car sales business and are now in the wholesale car business, last year's license didn't note retail or wholesale, but no change, and this year's license did. And this year's license erroneously says retail. They've never once talked to us in recent years about retail. But the situation that they're in is that they had to mail back in their license plates today and can't be issued new license plates until now this board takes an action, which we can't now take for two weeks, until our next meeting or whenever we put this on the agenda. It would seem to me that this is an administrative action. The difference between retail and wholesale, we can look at the minutes, we can look at the meeting, they never once said that they're going to be selling cars out of that place. They haven't done it, we didn't anticipate them doing it. And, and now they can operate for the next several weeks. And, you know, I, I don't think that the position we should be in, when we have businesses that are at risk of going out of business, losing their licensure, not licensure, but losing their ability to sell through the R and V, the ability to transport these wholesale vehicles, to me, that rises to the occasion of an administrative action. So I, I just want to comment that I hope we can address this sooner than later, as soon as possible, so that way we can correct this, correct this error.
Thank you. Selectman Emke.
Two things. One, I saw Bill Bernard, DPW director, last week at our attempted Stormwater Task Force meeting, and he mentioned the Flat Hill Road speed limit and said there is a process with DOT. I don't know the details, but there may be more to resetting that speed limit that is beyond, beyond us. My, my second is, is truly an action item. To the town manager, would it be possible to ask town council during his office hours this week about our, the select board policy and the public communication policy situation?
Yes, I can put that on my list.
Thank you.
Selectman Alonso.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to let everybody know in regards to Mr. Jeffrey's second action item issue about the car dealership that we did receive. I was notified about this for the first time today. We did receive an email from town council regarding the official position on changing the license. So according to that, there is a specific process to go through, for better or worse. I cannot speak to previous changes to the license of whether they followed that process, the proper process or not, or whether the new process was changed since those other alter, you know, alterations of the license. But we did receive the fact that we need to go through a specific process to go and amend the license, just so everybody who's listening is aware of that.
All right, any other action items? Moving on to committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report?
Just, I have finance committee, as is previously noted in the meeting, is Thursday, and the, both the town manager screening committee and the capital planning committee are on Wednesday, the 31st, right, right after each other. And I believe we should have a full capital planning committee by the end of the meeting next week.
Selectman Emke, do you have one?
I have three. As I alluded to, the Stormwater Task Force was supposed to meet last week, however, we were unable to reach a quorum, trying to get a meeting scheduled before the next monthly. Budget Task Force met last night. We reviewed the benchmark communities for town and school. And our chair, Mr. Skolbrini, has proposed a layout of meetings every two weeks. Believe there were 11 meetings that get us to the end of the year. So we will be meeting on a biweekly basis. And school committee is meeting tomorrow. Their sole agenda item is ARPA requests.
Thank you. Do you have one? Selectman Jeffries?
Yeah, the only update I have in, you know, I want to make a public comment, so I'm not going to say it then, but I was notified from the members of the library trustees that one of our trustees, Mr. Bob Conroy, unfortunately passed away recently. Services at this point are private, but I think there was some communication that there may be a public memorial service. You know, Bob has served our community for many years. It certainly was a tragic event. And just want to extend condolences to the Conroy family and also to the members of the library trustees who've worked with Bob for many, many years.
Thank you, Selectman Jeffries, for sharing that. Planning Board met last night. They continued their public hearing that's been going on for what seems like forever now for the Stormwater approval for 255 Sunny Hill Road, and it's coming to a conclusion. So they didn't vote on it last night, just because one member of the board wasn't there, but it looks like it's going to be approved. And they're extending the, or continuing the public hearing until sometime in August. I didn't write down the date, but they limited the continuation solely to vote on it. So discussion is over, and that looks like it's going to pass. But other than that, there wasn't really anything that I felt needed to be brought up in this meeting. All right, so upcoming meetings, we will be meeting next on August 6th. There's no meeting next week. And then we'll also be meeting on August 13th and August 20th. Moving on to public comment. The town manager, do you have a public comment tonight?
I do. Thank you. As tonight is my last select board meeting, I want to take this as an opportunity to say thank you to all the residents, business owners, select board members, past and present, our state delegation, past and present, and all the town and school staff, past and present, that I have had the privilege of working with and being your town manager the last seven and a half years. Since making my announcement in June, I would equate my experience to the movie It's a Wonderful Life. Sometimes only the immediate issues at hand or crisis of the day are the perception of the impact you have. Thank you to everyone who's taken the time to send me letters, emails, texts, phone calls, or have stopped by the office to say thank you. It has always been my intent to do what I can to make Lunenburg a better place to live, work, and visit. Whether this has been to support departments in their vision of growth, provide support resources for staff, address aging building needs, create partnerships with businesses and nonprofit organizations, apply for grants to lessen the burden on taxpayers, introduce policies and procedures that strengthen the organization, advocate for the needs of the community with our state representatives and senator, or simply act as a liaison to address the residents' need, I take this role very seriously and the responsibilities that come along with it. I believe there have been many successes, more successes than failures, in my time here, and I also attribute that to the many committed residents on different organizations, committees and boards, and the dedicated staff we have that I've worked with that have made these successes possible. Since I began as town manager, we have implemented a long-term staffing plan for the police and fire departments by adding six full-time police officers and six full-time firefighter paramedics. Through a reorganization plan per the charter, a town facilities department was created with a facilities director and another facility staff position added. The position of assistant town manager, HR director, was created. A part-time recreation director position was created. A part-time administrative assistant position was created. A part-time data collector position was created. A part-time council on meal site manager position. A part-time assistant council on aging outreach. Part-time library assistant positions. Part-time clerical position at the police department. Seasonal cemetery labor positions. An assistant to the sewer business manager. Part-time minute clerk positions. A part-time conservation administrative assistant. And we have incrementally increased for staff hours that were cut since 2008, the same as a school has done during the tenure of the superintendent, towards a long-term staffing plan. Yet there still is a long way to go and more progress to make for the next town manager. There also have been a number of capital improvements over the years, such as repainting of the town hall, remediation of mold and bird waste in the basement and attic at town hall, making the second floor ADA accessible, making the town hall ramp ADA compliant, repairing a portion of the roof at the adult activity center, the ADA pavilion at the adult activity center, the break room at the Ritter Building, the design for the entrance of the ADA accessible and design for the replacement of the windows at the Ritter, the roof repair at the DPW, the replacement of the fuel pumps at the DPW, the hazardous removal at the old primary school and demolition of the building, the replacement of the carpet at the library and the public safety buildings, and all the work associated with getting 925 Masav to the point where the town can be poised to sell and redevelop this property. Improvements also occurred at Wallace Park and in the town beach buildings in the last several years. There are many other projects that are not mentioned here that are in the planning stages or are being prepared to be put out to bid. For infrastructure, soon after I began in 2017, I worked with the DPW director on a complete streets policy for the board to adopt in order to become a complete streets community and be eligible for construction funding. New sidewalks, ADA ramps, and access path through the upper common were funded through this program. The summer street improvement project occurred during my time here. We applied for a small bridge program funding for both the Pleasant and Flat Hill Bridges and a request for fully funded for both. Again, many more projects for infrastructure were done in my time here, and that was with the help of the department heads and support of the boards and committees involved. There are countless other things, big and small, that I am honored to be a part of making happen at my time here during Lunenburg, that I did not do these things alone. I took working with the select board, the finance committee, the capital planning committee, other boards and committees, residents, the school, and many town department heads and staff over the years. To name everyone here would be impossible, as there have been hundreds. Each of you know who you are. Thank you. Now back to my reference of It's a Wonderful Life. Some may think my proudest accomplishment has been how far we have come on 925 Masav. While this was a property I noticed that could be redeveloped, and instead of being eyesight in the downtown area, could be a gem, my proudest accomplishments are the relationships I have made and the ones that will last beyond my time as your town manager. I do want to clear up some rumors I have heard. The board did not ask me to resign, nor did we meet an executive session to discuss anything related to my resignation. As with other, with any relationship, trust is very important to me, and losing trust had a role in my decision. In the end, this is the best decision for me and my family. Lastly, I want to thank my family. My husband, Jason, son Ryan, and daughter Ella. Without them, it wouldn't be, it would not be possible for me to do the job that I have done over the years. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Heather. Working with you has truly been a pleasure. You are one of the most hardworking and dedicated people I have ever worked with, and I truly mean that. And I want you to know, you will absolutely be missed. So thank you so much, Heather.
I also want to thank Heather as she departs. You know, I've gotten to work with Heather now for five years and for two of them pretty closely as chair. Heather is a dedicated public servant, unquestionably so. She has found for our community hundreds of thousands of dollars for, in grants and other sources. She is well-respected by her peers and colleagues in other communities. And Heather is one of, if not the best people that I know. You know, her and I have not always agreed on everything, but we have certainly agreed far more than we have not. We've leaned on each other during, during challenging times. And I want to acknowledge that over the last couple of months, it has been challenging. We've all heard rumors, many of them, you know, are not based in, in any sort of fact. But Heather, despite all this, finished with us incredibly strong. You know, I think a lot of times when people decide to move on from a community, you know, they kind of step back a little bit. And I think Heather instead leaned in, if that was even more possible, given, given the hours she worked. With plans, assisting the board in our transition to an interim, and really just laying the groundwork so that way someone else can come and pick it up. I think that, you know, being a town manager for us is part of the work of, has been part of the work of Heather's life. I also want to thank Heather's family, her son, her daughter, and her husband, Jason. They've made an incredible sacrifice for our benefit over these last seven and a half years. So Heather, thank you for all of your hard work for our community. It is, it is very much so appreciated, and I sincerely wish you all the best.
Selectman Alonso. I see you have your hand raised.
I will hold off in case somebody else wants to speak first.
I just, I'll, I'll be really quick, because I wasn't sure if I'd be able to be here tonight, so I, Heather, I gave, thanked you last week, but, so I'll keep it brief, but I have a lot of respect for you. I want to thank you very much for your dedication, and I just want to wish you nothing but the best going forward.
Go ahead, Selectman, Selectman Alonso.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I don't know where to start, first of all. I also did not know I was going to be here on this meeting, and because of the interim town manager issue, I, I'm attending from vacation. Everybody who's followed these meetings is, knows my position on Heather's performance. I have worked closely with her throughout my tenure here on the board, gotten to know her as a chair, as a member, as a fellow committee member, working with other committees, whether it's capital planning or others. And everything that everybody has said about her is absolutely true. There is not one decision she's made that did not have the best interest of the town at heart, did not have the best interest of the citizens at heart. Hard as working, worked through vacations all the time, despite my counsel that she shouldn't. Worked as many hours through past her, you know, her resignations, instead of paring down, again, worked just as hard to run through the finish line when most normal employees would not do that. And all of those are, hold her, I hold her in the highest regard. I also don't want to ruin her moment, but I have to say a but here. There gets to be a point when I can only hear so much. It's almost like Mr. Jeffries is sorry to see her go. The effusive praise he just laid on would indicate to people listening that he's sorry to see her go. But we all know, and I will say this out loud, that he is largely the reason why she is leaving, number one. He has created an environment of speaking things publicly, saying things privately that contradict each other and create an environment that makes it impossible for her to do her job. As chair, when I, when he, before he stepped down, I had asked about the town manager's contract and when those renegotiations were going on, and he told me that as far as he's concerned, he was a no vote on renewing her contract anyway. This is before she resigned. He also contacted a fellow board member and asked if they would support a motion that he would raise to remove her from office. And yet, we just heard the most effusive praise of her job with him doing this behind the scenes. I do not bring these her job with him doing this behind the scenes. I do not bring these to light with any pleasure. But it gets to be the point where enough is enough, and people need to know what is actually going on. There is no reason that we shouldn't be losing our town manager. There is no reason she wanted to leave other than the environment became too hostile for her to be involved in. And that is the saddest fact of all. She has done an excellent job. I have not agreed with everything she's done. She is fully aware of that. And you know what? I've been very vocal about that openly, in those times when I've disagreed with her. But the accomplishments that she just raised, and the things she's been able to do, and yes, we have more to do, but everything she has done, has done, been done with integrity, has done with hard work, and consensus with as many people as possible. And that, I hope, is what she is remembered for. But to see people throw praise when she, they are the reason why she's leaving, is just something that I could not stomach any longer. And I'm sorry to ruin her exit here with that news, but I think people needed to hear that news. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Moving on to public comment from the public. Mr. Bowen.
I just want to add by saying, Heather, thank you very much for everything you've done. John Bowen, Jean Marie Price, 162 Island Street. Don't worry. Mr. Alonso, we all know about Mr. Jeffries and Mr. Nizolo climbing up the same fence. Thank you very much for clarifying that, because we know what that policy was for. My comment is on that policy, that that policy that you have in town is actually a contract. You could ask any lawyer. Your signatures are on it. You're agreeing to follow and abide in it. You've made a contract. That means that you're in breach of contract, changing of that policy based on what Ms. Emke said. Thank you, Ms. Emke, for bringing up the fact that Heather should be talking to the lawyer about that. Why? Because the select board, and as the select board, Heather can hire that lawyer, to be able to put out a temporary restraining order, okay, on an emergency order, okay, which this action, and this policy, is actually a violation of, one, free speech. It's also a violation of ethics rules, as well as open meeting law. The reality is, okay, is that when you are a public employee, your employer cannot regulate your speech, okay? It's regulated partially and only through the Ethics Commission. And therefore, enacting a policy, running a policy through, without abiding in a policy, can have court ramifications that you could get done in less than five days. Then, Mr. Alonso, thank you. Heather, you could say the things Mr. Alonso said. Because you know why? Mr. Alonso's an elected official, and guess what he can say? Way more than you can as an employee. And he just did that. And I commend you, Mr. Alonso, for that, for being clear-headed. And that is why I said, he has a babysitter as the chairman of this committee, Mr. Nizolo, and that babysitter is Mr. Jeffries. And Amanda Moore is nothing but a thummin', who's not here tonight. Is that because she has three babies she has to take care of? Now she wants to use AI so she doesn't have to do a lot of work. Well, reading minutes are a legal document. They all need to be in black, okay? It's a legal document, and it needs to be not interpreted by AI, okay, because it will not be accepted or suffered scrutiny by any court. I can guarantee it. So continue using your AI. Continue acting in this manner. And you're going to see, because as a citizen, if I want to, I'll file a temporary restraining order against your little policy there, Mr. Nizolo, or Mr. Jeffries. And I can do that. Do you know why? Because I'll accuse you, myself, of breach of contract. And if you think I can't pro se that on my own, read all the cases that I have run through court pro se, and how many I've won. Just go on masscourts.org and start Google. You understand? That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time. And Heather, thank you, and I wish you the very best.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Mr. McDonald. You're muted if you're talking right now.
Sorry about that.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I just want to say, I have to agree with the last couple of talkers. One other thing is that, Mr. Chair, I lost some respect for you tonight. I thought you had integrity. You serve our country, and I, and you do it well. But you have to look what's going around. You are being manipulated. And that's what bothers me. You're being manipulated. This town has been manipulated. And it's, it's almost to a point where it's a joke. And when you have a chair for, been on boards the last two years, and did nothing but interfere with other departments, that tells you something right there. Heather, it's a shame you're leaving. And like I said to you in person, I wish you would reconsider. But it's, it's gone too far. So, Mr. Jeffries, as far as I'm concerned, you can leave anytime. No one's holding you here. And I just want to say to you, Mr. Jeffries, I think your three minutes are up. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. McDonald. Are there any other public comments? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Can I count that as a second? You both said so moved.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Selectman Alonso.
Aye.
Selectman Emke.
Aye.
Selectman Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. It is 9:16 PM, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in tonight. And we will be back here August 6th. Have a good night, everyone.